I called the order hour work session of the Ware County Board of Commissioners of August the 10th, 2020 at three o'clock PM. Begin with a roll called Vote of Commissioners, beginning with Commissioner Pope.
Present.
Commissioner Vars.
Present.
Commissioner Warner.
Present.
Commissioner Carter.
Present.
And the chairs present. Let the record show, Mr. Manager, we all are present. We'll stand, let's stand for the invocation I've asked Commissioner Vars to do and the pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Pope.
Father, we thank the Lord that this day is too made. We will rejoice and be glad and we ask God to your blessings that we go into the liberation concerning the city and the county and our citizens, oh God, in the county. We pray God you just give us the right decisions to make, oh God. Let us be open to all understanding, oh God. And Father, we pray God you look upon those that have been impacted by this COVID virus. We pray God that you would just remove this from us, oh God. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge your own and our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'd like to welcome everybody here today. It's like we got a nice little crowd of citizens and thank you for coming. We got our new Chairman-elect, he's here today, Mr. Edwin Triff. Thank him for coming and all the rest of you. Uh, Mr. Manager, let's get right into the agenda. First item, item A.
Under tab A is a discussion item on the ABC Avenue Extension or Jamestown Access Road Project. Uh, we have a presentation, a PowerPoint presentation. I think if Jonathan can get it up and running. If not, we've got hard copy handouts that I'm having some more made now if it doesn't seem to want to cooperate. Is there anybody? I can go ahead and pass out the copies I got to the others. Does anybody else who like a copy? What's that?
Just go ahead.
Okay, um, the handout that I gave you there shows pretty much just three options. I'll ask Brandon Wallace to kind of pitch in in just a minute. But, um, these are, these are two of the original, um, two of these designs here is the original ones that came back early on when Moreland Antebellary created the feasibility study. Uh, option one there is an access road connected from Tanner Lane to Wind Clay. Uh, option one A is, um, is a diversion of that to use someone else's property that was designed there. And then option two was the one we originally started with to, uh, to build the access road there on ABC. The extension of ABC there down along the railroad tracks. Um, since we've started on that, we found out, uh, in certain words that, um, that option was really not one that CSX thought was feasible nor that they liked. So we moved outside of the right of way on option two to try to go around and stay outside of the right of way of CSX. But we, we've got an issue there with going around the existing lift station that's located there. And then also there's a possibility, correct me if I'm wrong, Brandon, but we wasn't, we weren't sure at the time or the engineer wasn't sure at the time if he would be able to stay completely off of the railroad right of way because of that, that area there along the railroad tracks. Um, so with that being said, then the other option came into play with just exploring that idea and so forth. So the, what you see on the front sheet there on the map, option one is from Tanner Lane between the two ponds there straight down to Wind Clay. And then option one A is moving further down more east on Tanner Lane and connecting to Wind Clay, uh, on the other side of the most, um, east pond. Uh, and the back sheets there are the, the options and their cost. Uh, these are engineering estimates. Um, we will not know what it will cost, uh, from the standpoint of when we, um, submit our plans to the Corps of Army Engineers. And we don't know what that cost will be as far as purchasing additional wetlands credits. Um, so that, that and also the actual bid price, we won't know what that is, but these are just in, uh, engineering estimates. Uh, the last page there kind of explains the, the pros and the cons of the, of the two or basically three options, if you will. Um, one, one A, just below one. And then over on the right side of the sheet is option two. Uh, staying there adjacent to the CSX right of way, if we're able to stay off of the right of way. Um, one thing I'd like to throw in and, uh, that's one of the things I mentioned last meeting is that CSX, uh, gave us a construction agreement, uh, for the north section, not this section, but the north section up down where, um, where Jordan Drive is. And their cost as a construction easement just for their work was $350,000.
That's from Jordan Drive to where?
Uh, Turnus, down to Turnus. And, um, so we estimated just based on what we were doing and the, the length of the road and so forth and the, and the, the amount that we're using in their right of way. And we would expect it would be twice that or three times that amount to actually try to build in their right of way and the way it was. But they basically told us verbally and through email that they prefer us to look for other alternatives, that they didn't really care for us to be in their right of way. So that's what made us move outside of that, of the right of way there of where the existing ABC is right now. So, um, I'll, I'll leave it at that. I don't know if Brandon has anything you need to add? I don't know if you need beyond what I've got.
You pretty well covered. Thank Scott. One thing is if we, with the avenue option, uh, close to the railroad tracks, you would have to, it would be a total tape there by Blaylock of that property there. It's on corner of Blaylock and ABC Avenue Extension. And that house would have to be demolished or, um, be a total tape on that property. And then, uh, the other sand owner on the other side of the creek would be significantly impacted and just a third of his property actually taken. And then that, um, that property would probably not be built. So you'd be, you have a total impact to two property owners on, in one of the option of our railroad tracks and CSX. It's always the same thing on their right of way.
Yeah, I'm terrified. I like, uh, cause everything, Father, what y'all say is God's people, whether they understand you say.
Come on up to the mic.
Hey.
Come on here.
Come up to the mic, station aiming.
My name is Jim, Tanner, I live at 36 over one Tanner Lane. All y'all, let me up there several times about this. One, he come out here the other day, got my land, him, the engineer, two more full time on my land like they don't, y'all don't own my land, Steve. You done my land, you asked to go in my land. Just like when they went down ABC Avenue with that damn board machine. They went down there and they crushed two pipes where I had already built the road. And I showed you, you don't understand, Steve. They crushed the pipe and then when I called and the county engineer come to me, they said they take care of it. They get to take care of it. So another fix I've got to deal with. If you in there, Steve, and I showed you the right of way, you don't have to buy Hickson's house. If you buy Hickson's house, that road's going to run straight into the parking lot of the church. That's, that's stupid. Because then you got to take a left and right back to the right, the little lefts right there to run all the way up the roadway. Have y'all purchased the right of way from the railroad on the roadway? Have you got permission from DC Canis to get his land on the roadway?
We ain't acquired any kind of land yet.
Y'all still don't know what y'all doing. Basically, what you trying to do. Y'all haven't got permission from DC Canis. You haven't got permission from, uh, DC Brother. You haven't went down to Jordan Drive and talked to me and you sit there and talk about it. Went up in that lady's yard there, the right of way there. So y'all still don't know what y'all doing. And according to this plan right here, when you got phase two, if you put it up on the camera, I'll explain that to you. But I explained it to you, Steve, and pulled it up on the phone. You sat right there and told me my land and not running into Wind Clay. And I called you out and I told you I bet you a thousand dollars. That's a straight shot to Wind Clay. And you tried to prove me wrong when we telephoned, but it's not wrong. This right here still ain't right. Because if you look at that landline right there, it's totally that unamazing. It's a straight shot. And if y'all haven't gotten proof from the Army Corps of Engineers, y'all still got to go through that ladder. Because when you get something to prove down there by the creek, it don't come for that whole creek. Now, you can ask Ms. Austin that because her husband works for Dixie Conde. He deals with it every day. Anytime you move a road, you got to go back to the Army Corps of Engineers. You got to go to different places. Well, find out for yourself.
I know. You ain't telling me nothing. I know what you talking.
Okay, this fix to be an education process for all of you. Because he's talking about going in there and pushing dirt into that creek and building 20 foot bridge off the hill three.
But I went back to rebates. It could be a hundred and twenty foot bridge.
That still ain't enough, Steve. Because you flood me out and I'm going to file lawsuits against this town. Because you got to start at the back of my pond and you got to go all the way to Wind Clay. Because it's a 300 foot climb to Wind Clay right there. Me and you walked off the back of that hill the other day and you look down there and I proved you wrong. And if you put dirt into that creek down there, you're going to create a dam. When you create a dam, that water ain't got nowhere to go. You're going to flood it. Not only flooding me, but you're going to back it up all the way up under US one, all the way back around there from Orange Springs over Warren Pitt and that cable line around there. Everything coming down that creek comes to me. And right now, I should know where the water line was up the back, Steve. I should know where it come up my pond and how water affects my, that one building, just that one building, how it affects my pond. My spillway is been that deep underwater to where my pond cannot flood. You come out and talk about you wanted 60 foot right of way. That takes 10 foot of my pond. Y'all have to totally redesign one end of my pond. And if you're going to take some of this rainwater land, which is going to be on the other side of the cable line, then that right there ain't going to run up the wind ray like you going to do. Now, you can sit here and pout and look and tell me I'm stupid. I've stalled that creek right there for 59 years. Since the day I was born, I've been on that land right there. I can tell you what that water does. Then I can show you what that river does. Y'all have no idea. Y'all sit up there with these pretty little mats right here and ride down there in your pretty little four wheel drives. They come, we going to get out and talk to the plant owner. You just want to look at the little right of way and the mill counter keeps flooding. You don't walk out in that creek and see what the hell is going on.
You ain't seen me out here doing that.
I know. But I was going to end, I was with all, uh, all the rest of them off my land up there. If I'd have pulled the rock out of that, the other day, y'all knowing y'all was down there and there was a turtle sitting on my turtle trap. And I brought it up on my porch and shot that turtle on that turtle trap, I could kill it. Y'all not even going to do that. That's disrespectful. To the taxpayers that pays y'all salaries and y'all come up with these ideas right here. How much money have you paid that man right back there to design this, Scott? How many, how many engineers, guys, have y'all done this right here? And how much money has he made?
We only have one engineer. We only have one engineer.
How much did you pay?
Uh, total cost that we spent so far, that's not, that's counting credits because I don't have broken out. It's about 290,000.
290,000. How much did you spend on the bore test?
The what now?
The bore test.
That I don't know. I don't have that number.
Well, the rumor is it was $70,000. That's 270,000 dollars y'all spent that y'all going to take a taxpayer's money and just throw it on the damn creek and let it go to the river.
Mr. Tanner.
Burton, you sat up here and you talked the last time we had a meeting up here and we talked, you was all for everything. You wanted to go down ABC Avenue. There ain't a thing holding y'all up from ABC Avenue, but that lift station. That lift station's over 30 something years old. It can be shifted over.
Will you wait just a minute and let me finish my conversation, sir?
Say it because you ain't going to make no sense.
Okay, well, you just continue.
Mr. Tanner.
I don't, I don't really have anything to say to you, sir.
Okay. Because y'all said it. Y'all been saying it for four years.
No, I haven't.
Well, I don't know how long you've been up here, but y'all haven't, y'all do this stuff. Y'all do it behind closed doors. Ever since this coronavirus been going on, y'all been over here in y'all's little closed door meetings and picked on people, want y'all, what y'all want to do. You're pissed at me, Jimmy Brown, because I called you a liar right back there. He's pissed at me.
Let me tell you something, sir. I don't what you, I don't what you talking about calling me a liar. I ain't figured that out. I still ain't figured that out.
Jimmy.
That's right. And we ain't had no secret meetings up here. We don't have secret meetings. That's what you said, behind closed doors. We ain't had no behind.
I said, y'all don't have.
I got a motion if, if, whenever the time comes about this project and everybody be satisfied in this room, whenever I get read my.
I have one, Steve, too.
Yes, sir. But I, but I'm not through yet because this right here does not make any sense. To go around your elbow, go through two subdivisions. When you get up into Wind Clay, when them people get to Wind Clay, they've got to stop. They've got to take a right and they got to come back around up to Wake On The Drive, which is going to bottleneck it, just like Steve said. If they don't, they got to take a left. Then they go to a stop sign. Then they got to take a right. Then they go to another stop sign. They got to take another right. Then they go to another stop sign and they got to take a left. Then they come back out on Frontier Estates. And when they come out on Frontier Estates, that traffic's going to be backed up to Frontier Estates waiting on them trains.
Play car drive.
Y'all talk about this right of way, that railroad on this right of way. Railroad don't own my land. That railroad right of way is 70, is 100 foot wide down there at Kettle Creek, all the way up down near the, uh, I don't know how far past the church. So when that means there's only 50 feet towards US one and 50 feet towards Neil Tanner's land.
They own 100 foot.
Because when that land bevels down like that right there, the base of that railroad track and that land is on my land then.
Yeah.
Same scenario that runs over there to that lift station. When you get over to that lift station and you get over in the front of the Dollar General store, that road that runs in front of the Dollar General store, that little pig trail, it ain't 10 feet, 25 feet off that railroad right of way. So you can't say the railroad's saying that y'all can't go downside their right of way because they don't own the right of way. Y'all own the easement to that Dad Burner Lift Station. There's a paved road over there, ain't there, Steve? There's also a tram road there. That tram road has telephone poles on it. There's an easement there. So that's a straight shot. And I'm going to tell you something. My daddy's always told me it's easier to shoot straight than it is around a curve, son. You're not dealing with idiots out there.
I don't think none of us thinks we are.
Well, apparently y'all take us for that. Because the way y'all, y'all designing this right here is the, is the worst scenario you could go to.
Well, Tanner, we haven't done anything.
I know. That's what we're finding out right now. That's what we're finding out now. Basically, y'all still ain't got a plan after four years.
If the time allowed me directly in our regular meeting, I'm going to make a motion, we'll solve this problem.
Well, I know. You made a motion up here when we was all crowded in here last time. You turned and looked at every one of us and says, y'all vote to go down ABC? Y'all voted to go down ABC. Y'all during that, the Army Corps of Engineers on board?
The railroad was, we didn't know what the railroad was going to tell him.
You didn't vote on it?
That is before the railroad told us that they wanted some of the problem.
You're not on railroad property.
But the original plan was.
How can you get in?
To go around the, to go around the west side of the, uh, pump station, figuring out to go up against the, uh, railroad.
The railroad still don't own right that pump, that, that, that pump station. That pump station's not on railroad right of way.
I know it ain't but the west side of it, but we.
No, the, if the west side of it's on the, on the railroad right of way, then Steve, then why don't y'all, why does railroad have probably y'all build a road there? If the west side of it's on railroad right of way, then that means the paved road that leads to that lift station is on railroad right of way. And if that railroad right of way is on that, if that paved road's on railroad right of way and that tram road leading off that, that paved road, then that's on railroad right of way.
But the original plan was for us to get over on railroad property to build the road.
Steve, you know dang good well.
Somebody's going to build a retaining wall.
After we rode around the other day, you know you can't climb that embankment with that road, get any closer than what that paved road is going to that lift station. What, down around by the creek?
Scott, we're going to have to build that container wall that railroad want us to build between the new road and the railroad.
It actually was on the, between the railroad and the access road, if that's what you're saying, between the two. Is that the, that is correct, ain't it? Yeah, between the two.
Probably so. Because the railroad only owned said, uh, 50 feet, but the y'all see the road that leads in there to that lift station. And if you go down there with that wall like you got to build to hold their railroad dock back or whatever, you're going to have to do the same thing on my side, which the railroad don't own my land. Either way you look at it, that's the straightest, simplest shot. It involves the less traffic. It involves the less hassle and people. There's not a lot of people ain't here today. One, because of the coronavirus. Two, because it's just rained. But I got a petition right here with 35 names on it that don't want it coming through Jamestown and through Blaylock and through all that little winding that y'all talking about doing. Mr. Strickland right there, he give y'all a tooth.
We, we ain't voted to do anything. This commission has not voted to go through most of the body.
Y'all voted on it over a year ago, Jimmy, to go down ABC Avenue.
No, I ain't, I'm talking about through your land. We, we ain't voted on this for what's, what's here today.
That's right. And we're trying to, we're trying to keep y'all fun voting.
If my vote won't, I promise you. As I said, I got a motion right here whenever it comes down back. I think this, I think the Jamestown community be satisfied. Seriously.
Well, I hope so. I hope y'all really consider what y'all doing. If you want to pave Tanner Lane, pave it. All of us probably wouldn't have a complaint with it.
The lady by this lady by her says she don't want to pave.
Well, I understand that. We've been going out of there for what, 20 something? I know I've been going out of it. I built the road going in there. And until, until this day, y'all put a road grader on it four times. I finally got y'all to dump some dirt on it. And then they put some old slick clay up towards the front up there. I had to take my tractor, my angle blade and go up there and roll that clay and roll it and hire it till I buried it enough to where we didn't bog down going in and out of Tanner Lane. Shield witness to it, shield witness to it, and Mr. Heiser will witness to it. I'm the one that's took care of Tanner Lane for 20 something years, 30 something years. And to this day, right now, I've still got to go back out there and fix it again now because they've started a triplex down there that I don't agree with either, but ain't nothing I can do about that. And then the county, the sewer and water treatment center come out there the other day and ditched right down the ditch with their water line. What did that do? That turned all that clay up at the bottom of that ditch. Where's it at now? Running down that ditch, all the way down there to Tanner Lane. And it's going to cause that ditch to fill up. That water's going to jump that road, Tanner Lane, and end up on me. Now, I got to ask her husband to come down there with a backhoe and I got to pay him to form another ditch on my property so I can divert that water through that head, Steve, that I showed you, to get that water off of my property and out of the front of my house. Like I said, y'all don't know what you dealing with. I pulled the tape measure on it, Steve, the other day for my landline to 60 foot, like you said you want me. That's taking 10 foot of my pond. And I know exactly what happened. It happened when I built it. And it still happens to this day. I fought the battle of having to redo and rebuild and reshape because of what everybody else has done to me. And I am ticked and I'm tired of it. I'm fixing to be 59 years old. I ain't got time for this no more. I fought the city. I fought y'all. I fought everybody about it. The city went out there and they dug the pond. But I had to shape it. I had to keep the water pump out of it. I had to shake it with my tractor. Just like right now, y'all see this rain right here. Get you two or three of them and then come visit me. Then come down there, Steve, and y'all pull down there in your little four wheel drive like you did the other day. Then call me to come pull you out with the tractor. Because you ain't been down there like that. You coming down there when it's, when ain't by that much water in Kettle Creek. Y'all don't know about all the trees that fell across. Y'all don't know about all the trees that's fell across that Kettle Creek and diverting that water left and right, all through that swamp bottom down there. And when it gets behind me, that thing turns into about four hundred feet or four hundred yards of nothing but wetland.
Comments. We're moving on to three-thirty. I know we've got some other citizens that wanna be heard from on this.
I'll let them go, but y'all remember where I stand on this.
Please, let's, 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 let's.
I'll keep it short.
Yes, ma'am, five minutes.
One more time, one more time. Y'all need to start and go back to that church out there and pull the people together, just like you did when you started this.
We, we gonna get that opportunity here shortly.
First of all, I'm returning the stakes that were placed on my property without our permission. I, I don't know who gave.
I don't know anything about them.
Um, they came out and put some stakes on our property where the road's gonna go. So there's your stakes and until you take it from me, y'all can have them. Um, but first of all, I, I'm not a Waycross person. I've just been here four years. So I don't know anybody, don't, ain't buddies with anybody or nothing. How long have you been on the board?
I've been on the board two years almost.
How long have you been on the board?
Four years.
How long have you been on the board?
Eleven and a half.
How long have you been on the board?
Almost six months.
Okay, how long have you been on the board?
Too long.
Too long. So my thing is.
Ma'am, before we get started, and I don't mind, I may missed it. Did you state your name and your address for the reference?
My name is Jennifer Rainwater. I live at thirty-six forty-two Tanner Lane. I'm one of the ones on the thing that says, you know, take my property. So, but the thing is, is I've only been here for four years and I've been to umpteen meetings about this. And last year, we voted on a decision that it goes up there at the railroad tracks. It's, it's, we've stopped what we're doing because we don't wanna build on something that y'all are gonna come in and take a, run a road right through the middle of our property. So, but the thing is, is this is obviously from knowing the neighbors. This has been going on forever. So who, who's gonna fix it? I mean, who, who's gonna fix it? It's not like a new issue. So, I mean, but how would y'all feel if you lived where I live or where Neil lives or where Mr. Strickland lives or where Larry lives or whoever else is on that list? I mean, it's just a vicious cycle and it's like somebody wants to put a feather in their cap to, to get it done or whatever. But, I mean, if you haven't even been out there like Neil says, to look, you just said instead of forty feet, a hundred and twenty feet build up? Mr. Steve, is that what you said from four? So how much more is that gonna cost? I mean. Okay, well, how long? Is it, is it more expensive to build a long bridge or a short bridge? Okay, so there you go. I mean, so, but you, y'all have not been out there. So why, why are we even talking about it when you have that talk to the Corps of Engineers?
We gonna, we gonna answer that question at, at appropriate time in, in this meeting.
But I'm just saying.
We gonna solve the problem in Jamestown.
Oh, okay. That's what y'all said for four years since I've been here.
You'll be pleased, I promise you.
Okay, well, that's what, I mean, it's just, we're putting on hold our decision to, to build our home, our forever home, you know, on our property because we don't want that road coming right there. Neil don't want it. This one don't want it. That one don't want it. I'm a nurse. I understand what the emergency situation is. But if you haven't been able to figure out in how many times people been living out there that way for sixty, seventy, eighty years.
And that track's been there since eighteen fifty.
I mean, and, and the railroad track tells y'all exactly what y'all can do. And yeah, they're a big industry here, but you know, somebody oughta have the stuff to stand up to them and say, we're gonna do what the best thing for us for a change. They sit out there and do what they want and sit on those tracks and they say it's because it's their broke down. Well, if you broke down, why you sitting over there at Dollar General getting a snack? You know, I mean, you should be wor, somebody should be working on something. But I see that on a daily basis, picking up my son from Wycona. I mean, that, that, that doesn't count to me as it, that you're broke down and you're doing something when you're walking across the street to get a snack at, at Dollar General. That's not any urgency to move. Um, I understand the emergency need, but like you said, I hope you do have a solution.
Yes, ma'am.
But I don't appreciate coming on my property and putting stakes up. And we tried to make a compromise.
Yes, ma'am. We understand.
But y'all wanna take for nothing and expect us to go replace our ten acres, two ponds, a creek, buildings for what you wanna give us, which we could never replace. So all these people that talk to this one, us, talk to Neil, talk to Kenny, talk to here, talk to there, y'all all talking around each other. Find a solution.
We have. We have a solution. Who wants to speak next? Five minutes, please, sir.
I'll talk fast. I'm Steve Strickland. I live on Heritage Circle. My property backs up to Rainwater's and Altman's property.
Yes.
And these times when we have a hurricane or something, Kettle Creek is no longer a creek. It's more like a river back there. Now, we did this in Jamestown. We come to agreement. Everybody was pretty happy. And now we doing a different thing, but we hadn't had a public hearing about nothing. Why haven't the, the people that live out there got some advance notice? We hear and all this, when they start driving states, we find out you're doing something to us. The, uh, I've known Leonard a long time and he knows that I argued with the railroad for many years, didn't Leonard? And I'm prepared to argue this one too. And I've, I've made a lot of phone calls. The, uh, there's a thing called the Southern Environmental Law out of Richmond, Virginia. They got an office in Atlanta. Talked to them today. They said that they cannot represent an individual like me, but they can represent a five oh one C. We gonna form a five oh one C and they will represent us for free. And then you got a, an argument in the courthouse that you don't have to put up with. The Orion Society, they handle eastern indigo snakes. They're federally protected. You cannot take their property.
That's right.
They are in Kettle Creek. I've had them in my yard. My neighbors had them in their yard.
Sure.
And these people said they coming to do an investigation. So you gonna have to fight them. Talk to the Audubon Society, we got pilated woodpeckers down there. They wanna take up your argument. Uh, the Nature Conservancy on the wetlands, they, I think they don't have a say so too. Uh, Sierra Club, environmentally sensitive property division, they don't have an argument. So it's, it's, it's gonna get drawn out, but the people in Frontier Estates do not want it coming through there. There's not a, everything out there is a dead end road. There's no through streets in Frontier Estates. You wanna come put a highway through there, go put it in your neighborhood. I don't care what they do out there on, on Scapa Road, but don't come through our neighborhood and run. It's quiet. These people ride bicycles. They walking, got kids playing. And yet these people coming from town that's blocked by a train, they not gonna deserve no ten or fifteen mile an hour speed limit. They only be getting it, going down the road. That's, that's about all. But if the cost, this is being done by SPOS. If we ain't got enough money to, to build a wall beside the railroad track to hold their right of way, wait till we get some more money from SPOS, then we'll build it with that money. We ain't gotta build it today or tomorrow. But SPOS got voted down last time. If you won't insist on doing this, uh, we got forms up here already. We'll buck no on SPOS next time.
Thank you for your time. Yes, ma'am. Come forward and states his name and address for the record and we'll give you five or six minutes, please, ma'am.
I'm Sandra Altman and I live at thirty-six forty-six Tanner Lane, which is at the very dead end of the road. My husband and I bought a large piece of property on a dead end unpaved road on purpose because that's the lifestyle we wanted to live. We didn't want a lot of traffic. We didn't want a whole bunch of neighbors. And from our house, and so I definitely do not want this bypass road in there, okay? And that's, I think it's kind of, the whole neighborhood feels that way. Also, I don't want Tanner Lane paved. We've lived there happily for nineteen years and Tanner Lane has not been paved. Our children and grandchildren can ride the four-wheelers and their golf carts up and down Tanner Lane. They can go through Neil's property, whip it back through Scott and Jennifer's. They can come down the planted ponds at our house, go around the pond. And we, they never have to touch pavement and we do not have to worry about them getting run over. So in order, pardon me, please. Also, and correct me if I'm wrong, because you know how you hear things. I heard today that the folks that are trying to build all of those triplexes on Tanner Lane, which they are, and it's, it's strictly a financial situation for them. It's a quality of life issue for us.
Man, right there, they can tell you. I don't know if he lives.
No, I know. I mean, I live out there with them too. But what, what I heard today was that if the county paves Tanner Lane, then the county's on the hook to pave all these roads that they're gonna need to put in these triplexes. And that's not money well spent for the county. The county could spend that money to go fix Blaylock where those folks actually want it to be fixed and want it to be paved. And the money would be much better spent over there. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. We'll move on. I will. Uh, I talked to the manager today. I'll just let you in. This chairman, been here eleven and a half years. I'm gonna make a motion to this commission about what we gonna do in Jamestown, and I think it'll please all of you. But it'll be at the five o'clock meeting. This is a work session. Can't take any action in this meeting. All right.
Can we attend that meeting?
No, sir. Has to be five o'clock. This is our.
Five o'clock, can we attend that?
Oh, yes, sir. Yeah, by all means. Yes, sir. I want you to hear what I got to say. I think it'll please all of you. This ain't, this ain't something that everybody else has had something to do with. This is Jimmy Brown speaking. I've been in this government fifty-one and a half years. Believe me. Yes, sir, I know where it is. I sure do. All right, item B, Mr. Manager.
Okay, under tab B is Resolution twenty twenty dash twelve. It is the, uh, setting of the fiscal year twenty twenty-one millage rate. And a copy of the resolution's there in your packet. Um, this is a resolution that sets the millage rate at the rollback rate of fifteen point two four zero.
Would you mind briefly just give us that less rollback of five point three?
Yeah, you wanna, you wanna.
You wanna tell, you wanna tell the people why, why that's that way?
You want a copy of this? You can look at it and just see what they're looking at.
Whenever I said that, tell them why that's five point three zero one rollback.
Yes, sir.
What, 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 what caused that?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. Well, most of y'all do know me, but my name's Roger Collins. I'm the tax commissioner, uh, chairman. What we have, the gross, um, M and O millage rate is twenty point five four one. So that meant, what that means was if we didn't have any sales tax on the lost.
Lost, lost.
The lost, just the lost.
Okay.
Which that's, that's your fifth.
L O S T.
When it comes to the sales tax, you got the first four percent is state tax. The fifth penny, that's your loss, your local option sales tax. That is strictly for rollback of property taxes. So we have five point three zero one mils of sales tax just to the county's portion. And that equals, it was, off the top of my head, it was around, it was a little over four million dollars, that one penny for the lost.
How about?
A little over four million dollars.
Okay.
That come back to the county to allow for that rollback. Okay, your net M and O millage rate's gonna be fifteen point two four zero. That, that is a, uh, reduction from, I think it was fifteen point four six seven. So, or six, it was fifteen point six four seven, I'm sorry. And the reason why there was a reduction of the millage rate rollback, we had a lot, a lot of businesses come online that had tax abatments in industrial park that actually came on, uh, to be taxable. Okay, we had new, you had new buildings. You had new, uh, FedEx building for one. Uh, it came along in just new businesses, houses, houses being sold. So the frozen values go away and what they purchase for is where we got, where we got the values at. Um, the, the one thing that a lot of people is thinking that the milli, the valuations, the reassessment of some of the homes and of the properties in Ward County was gonna drive up the millage rate, and that's not, that's not true because when it's broken down, the reassessment of the existing properties actually goes against your millage rate, will actually force it down to where you get what it is, is to get the same amount of taxes as the previous year. So that's what they looking at millage rate. So you got a reassessment. So if that value comes up and it's existing properties, that millage rate will come back, will come down to get the same amount of taxes. Um, and also, just, just for the record, which we talked about the last time I was up here, was a lot of the, um, of most, in the, specifically, I'm gonna say specifically in the county, since the city decided to keep their millage rate where it was, which is like a tax increase. The unincorporated residents with their, with their, with their properties properly homesteaded will actually see a decrease in their taxes. Even if they have, if they're homesteaded properly, even if they had an increase in their values, they will have a decrease of their taxes because the increase of your values is actually gonna be exempted because of the frozen values. If that makes sense. And I'll take a questions. If anybody's got any.
Anybody got a question? Just a man that can answer.
There is no SPOS. SPOS tax ended, uh, July first. So you, local option sales tax, that is, that's one that is a, um, is in a government agreement between the city and the county. That's not voted on by the, by the county. That, well, that's, that goes on sales tax. No, 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 sir. So your first, like I said, the first four percent is your sales tax, state tax. Your fifth penny is lost, that's your local option sales tax. Okay, then after that, but since we have SPOS that's gone away, you have E SPOS, which is an education. It goes to, it goes through all the school system. That strict, that, that sixth penny goes to nothing but the school system. Then you got your seventh and eighth penny. The seventh penny will, is consists of the regional T slots. That's the one that comes in and money all goes to Atlanta and they distribute it back out to the counties on their pro-rata portions, which is preset by a body of which wasn't the county. Um, and then after that, you got your local T slots. And that one penny stays, it, it comes back and stays in the community between, split between Waycross and Ward County.
We voted again, I get farthest SPOS from this SPOS penny that I had. And there will be, I mean, you'll be getting two pennies for just one damn.
No, no, SPOS is actually split with, uh, the special purpose local option sales tax is stripped between city and county.
But you'll be getting two pennies for the city and the county.
It'll go back to nine cent.
It'll go back to nine cent, but it'll be, it'll be at nine cent until two thousand twenty-three when the local option T slots runs out and it cannot be removed. So state law, state law dictated that if a local, uh, government, they pass the, uh, T slots, the local T slots, it's only good for five years if a regional one passed. So the regional pass, and it's good for ten, this one's only good for five. Once it goes away, it's done. So you'll go to eight percent, you'll go to eight cent if this SPOS was to pass come the general.
I just noticed one hundred and forty. Seems like, I mean, I went through it for five years ago, five years ago, my house was at five eighty-nine, five eighty-five. It's a six eighty-five now. And I'm getting taxed, they're putting taxes on the English.
So, so what you need, what you need to look at, what you need to look at is you need to go and check your homesteads. Look at how homesteads you have. Whether or not you have, you have a frozen. If you have a frozen, if you have a just an S, a river, Esco homestead, it'll show on your tax bill, shows on your sessions. So if you have an Esco homestead, you're not frozen. If you have just, you just, if you have just a frozen county homestead, you'll have an E F code. If you have the school freeze and the county freeze, you'll have a P E code. So you have to look at these codes to see where you at. And as far as this year, there's nothing to be done come January first. You can always talk the sessions off and say, hey, what, what do I have? And then come Jan, between January first and April first, you can go up there and reapply for your homestead. And, and I recommend, you know, one every once in a while, but look, find out where your homestead's frozen at, if it's frozen, if you had all the homesteads.
Well, see, all that makes sense, Roger, but nobody knows that, just like me. You see the tax bill, you see the G S code, they tell you. So you don't know these codes. People aren't educated about it. They don't know how to. You go back, I didn't know that existed, that I should do that. I know I went to the county and they cleared it and I. I didn't know that existed, that I should do that. I know I went to the county and declared an area decree of wildlife management area or whatever, and they give you a tax break on that. But it seems like every time I turn around, there's another tax. I bought a boat last year. And then when I bought that boat, I turned around and I had to buy a tag on my boat. The boat tag was twenty-five dollars. And I had to register with the state. That was another place, something like that. And when I go fill another gas, I had to pay the gas tax. And I grabbed something deep, I found another tax. And when I get down to buy shrimp, I-
You don't have to.
Now, yeah, I'm gonna say you were taxed to it. I'm saying you were taxed to it.
You just sent me a bag. It was a hundred and twenty-five dollars. I'm sitting in my garage.
Most definitely. Well, here's a, here's a thing. A boat, a boat is considered personal property.
Well, that's my old wicker, my old, my old, my gun, so whenever I-
Only if that's, only if that's associated with a business and you gotta return it or the session. But with personal property, a boat-
I'm here.
And that is personal property. That, and that's exempt. No, you can, this is all, that is all state law. That's all dictated by the state.
Boat ever won a medal?
Well, a boat, the money's not gonna help if you can't change-
But we'll change your attitude.
If you can't change the law.
Won't change mine, though. I'm going with it.
So the bottom line is with a boat, that's considered personal property. Okay, and the values on that, you gotta have my things off of Marshall and Swift. They got, they got you Marshall and Swift, and that, and they actually get a list of all boats that are registered where county from the D N R. So, I mean, that's, there's nothing with that, there's nothing with that state, that's state law. And then they do that.
Well, I mean, all that's great, Roger, and I know you ain't got lots to do. But then you go to places like out there with the large water, to go fishing. You can't even drop down the room, drop there. But then you go to Atlanta, they got all theirs paid. They got all their, got a nice five thousand dollar, they got sewer hookups for cameras and everything, you come down here, you have a pretty good camp out there on the water.
Again, that's state. That's, that's state.
We don't have those troubles.
That little D N R, I'm just, just being honest. He comes around. He knows well as I know, that money that comes in, it doesn't matter, it leaves here, it's going to Atlanta. What little bit comes back down this way, it's all controlled in Atlanta. Everything, them first strings are handled in Atlanta. So most of that money will stay on the court. So that's something, that's something that you're gonna have to take up with, with James for ten and John for ten. And see, I'm just, I mean, I'm just being honest with you. I'm just being honest with you. That is just the way it is. They, the money that, the sales tax that gets sent to Atlanta, they keep a portion of that before they send that back down to the county and to the city. They keep it as an admin fee, even though they get their four percent, we have to send, that, that money has to be sent up to Atlanta. And then they, they keep, they keep an administrative thing to send that money back down to, down to. And at the local T, and the regional T SLOs, they take all that money, they dictate, you're gonna get X amount of dollars, and I'll give you an idea how much, and y'all gonna have to help me on this. Yeah, twenty, so, so out of, out of almost eight million dollars, only eight hundred thousand dollars of that penny a year comes back to Ware County. That is, that is the original T SLOs. That is the one that we voted down, I think Coffee voted down, and Lance voted down, but everybody else voted for because they, they are the, the receivers. They, we're, we're the donors, and they're the receivers, and they want all that money. And they're, they got out and voted.
Well, I mean, this same thing with your, your fifteen fishing license, they went from like fifteen, twelve dollars, and now it costs you fifty dollars. You didn't need fishing licenses anymore.
I understand, but I, I mean, there's, there's a lot of stuff that we can't control, and all of that is all dictated by that. And your boat track, it was twenty-five. It was twelve.
Okay, where were you at?
I have no idea. Well, just, just basically stating that the millage rate here in the county and the school, the school's even gonna use a rollback, is actually lowered down. And I have actually taken some, and y'all, I've handed y'all each one of y'all's twenty twenty tax bills, what it's gonna look like, to see, and they can show, he can tell you his went down and his value went up. And that, that's what everybody's under impression, that just because the values go up, that you're gonna get taxed more, and that's not true. Particularly at the homesteads, is the big thing is to look and see which homestead you have. And if you have any questions, you can call my office, you can call the sessions office, and we're all up to proof, you know, we'll help out whatever.
I filled out a form about a month ago.
And I think, believe me now, it's, it's all in one, and you gotta correct me if I'm wrong, Billy, is as far as the freezes, once they come, sign up now with a homestead, it's, it's all, it's all combined, right? In the one application. Where before, if you was homesteaded when now Judge Boggs had, had the county freeze put in, if you didn't come back and reapply, you still do not have that frozen homestead.
You might have to reapply.
You'll have to reapply. You don't have to reapply every year. All you have to do is just, you need to go back. Judge Boggs, you know, when, when Mike was in office, he passed, he had the, the county freeze pass. And then when Mark Hatfield was in, they had the city freeze and the school freeze put in. So for each one of those, you have to reapply. So if you, if you was in, you reapply, and you had got frozen with, with, when the Boggs bill went through, you were, you were fine within, when, when Hatfield had his pass, if you didn't go back and reapply, you don't have the school freeze, or if you live in the city, you don't have the city and the school freeze. But you actually have to go back and reapply.
Well, you're gonna get here for me.
Well, that's not me, I'm-
I know, but I'm talking about, I'm gonna come find out.
That's, that's fine, yeah. Well, that's what you should. That's, everybody should.
And y'all can smile if you want to. Long y'all might go out on a run, you know, they, with a pull man, make it forty-five, thirty-five.
He worked for the state.
Drunken, drunken race twin, and he was keeping up thirty-three acres of land, and got three different tax bills, five different trailer tax, two different boat tags. And I ain't paying taxes today if I figured it out the other day.
Well, now, I'm gonna have to be honest with you. I don't even own a boat, so you got me back too.
We're gonna have to stop this.
I did have a motorhome, but anyway.
I said, we need to move on.
But anyway, what, what, what we're looking at seriously though is millage rate will roll back because we actually have new businesses, we have the, the new businesses that came online. You got tax abatements that's actually, that's gradually going out, that's being taxed next year, that's going to be even higher. So, and I will say the tax bills will be going up next week.
Thank you, Mr. Tax Commissioner. Appreciate it. All right, item C, Mr. Manager.
Uh, we have a tab C. Is a request to award a bid for the 2020 Local Maintenance and Improvement Grant, uh, DOT's L-MIG resurfacing program. Uh, it is to resurface Tebow Street, Pinehurst Drive, Blaylock Road, and some Southwood area streets.
Twenty-seven streets, exactly. What, if these, each one of these on this lift, that's twenty-seven.
Yep. Yes, sir. Yeah, there's, there's areas, and then also some shorter streets in there too.
So all of the west side, all of the east side of Jamestown will get resurfaced back?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. Manager, will you take just a minute and explain what L-MIG means to the audience?
Yes, sir. It is a, it's a grant program that we receive funds from DOT every year. It's based on our road mileage. And we get a set amount each, each, each year. Last, this year, we got less, this year than we did last year. This year, this, this is not the one, but this one, we received a little over a million dollars last year, which is what the 2020, I call it last year, it's really this fiscal year. And then this money is to be used for all types of transportation improvements, resurfacing, paving, street drainage, bridge repair, bridge replacement, those kind of things.
Okay, how much of that? How much SLO do we have to add to that?
Uh, to this one, we'll have to add, out of our 2014 SLO, a hundred and two thousand, five hundred and sixty-three dollars and twenty-three cents.
That's the penny that we got voted out, yeah. This one, yeah. Everybody knew that. So now this money, this penny runs out, we out. On what we'll do about next year. Just have to cross that bridge and there we get to it. Okay. Yes, sir, go ahead.
God, on these streets, uh, when it's been slated to be resurfaced, uh, do we pick streets or do they pick streets? How does that work?
We pick streets. We have to turn in an application to DOT for it to be approved, but we basically go off whatever list that was, that's not included in our single county T SLOs or what we've had budgeted in our regular SLOs. So typically, what we do is we look for streets of that, and a lot of times, we have situations where, you know, your priorities change year to year. You may think that you're gonna resurface certain streets. Well, in the meantime, you have a drainage problem and have to replace cross drains, so you have to go back in and replace those. And so basically, we, we have to come, we come up with the streets and the projects and submit them to DOT.
And the city has a list also, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, this is separate from the city.
Yeah.
Sure.
You went right down there and placed a big dent in the road out there, forced the highway, stopped a slam of all that work a while ago. Running right past it, right out into the other corner. Because nobody could get the county involved and get that cord back.
I'm getting that taken care of now. I said, I'm getting that taken care of now.
I opened one up there by a flash through, it's the same thing.
Commissioner, y'all, okay.
The same thing, they corporate over there, they had a speed by the dray off machine. This part of the county has been for a long time now. He said we don't have a cake or a ranch. I think we need to go on Saturday or get somebody back in that dray off machine, the shuttle ain't gonna do it. They went down off Winnie Avenue, they cleaned out the cord with the shuttle, then they piled the dirt out there on the lip of the ditch in front of the cord that they just dug out. So what happened, Mr. Chris? I drove around right back into the cord.
Commissioner, y'all, okay, putting this on the agenda. Millage rate too up?
Yep. Yep.
Please him.
Okay.
Mr. Manager on that. All right, item D.
Okay, under tab D is a request from the Waco, Ware County Land Bank Authority to appoint post for five, six, and seven. Commissioner Burris was appointed by the county for post five, I believe that's correct. And we need to appoint for six and seven. The former Commissioner Carlos Nelson was post, appointed to post seven. And his, his term expires at the end of this year, calendar year.
So we need to, we need to name two for consideration.
Well, basically, three, yes, sir. Mr. Singleton asked not to be reappointed. He was the executive director of Action Pack, so we would need to-
He gonna stay on?
Yeah.
Everybody okay with that, Commissioner Burris? I am. All right. Mr. Brian Singleton and Carlos Nelson. Anybody got any recommendations?
Anybody know this one job?
Yeah.
Hey, Neil, you gonna sit on the land bank?
You wanna sit on the, come on, man.
I'd be sitting, I'd be sitting out there on me y'all stairs away. I'd be sitting like my mom was only two twenty years ago, and you had me in education. I'd be sitting where I made a sitting right there.
You got a high school diploma, haven't you? You got a high school diploma, haven't you?
Yeah.
So what's that?
I can sign my name.
That's all I got. I just got common sense. That's all I got. The, the work for this county for fifty-two years, yeah. Yes, sir. All right. We need, anybody want to volunteer? You want to point two? How about Gaines?
They reappointed.
How about Gaines?
Carlos Nelson. Carlos back.
How about happiness? You already on it? All right, okay.
I'll see your name on there.
County.
Huh?
I mean, he said he represented for the education. Other people on there, who do they represent?
You, you on the land bank?
Yeah, he's on there.
Steve Strickland?
No, I'm talking about Mr. Gaines. Oh, you are on the city side, on the school side?
School side.
Okay, got you. Of the land bank.
The school board on the land.
Okay, got you.
I will make a motion to appoint Steve Strickland to the position.
I see.
I'm on about four, I'm on about four board of directors.
No, you got-
That's what everybody says. Oh, I'm already on two pennies. No, that's just joking, I said. You got anybody, Steve? Any, anybody want to recommend somebody?
Well, that's for letting know if Carlos Nelson, if he's a great of the service, cause his term runs out, I guess we do.
He's, he's said that he's gonna stay on.
I think so, yeah.
So, oh, we need to just find something.
He goes out though, doesn't he?
We'll check, Commissioner Nelson, stay on.
It hadn't been around four years. That's what's so weird. We just did this like two years ago.
All right.
Yeah.
All right, there he is. We got him.
Got a good man. Yes, sir. Come up for the record and give us your name there so we can, I know y'all ain't have, but to the, Steve Strickland?
That's right. The, these projects we have, like Jamestown project and all that, can't we appoint some ad hoc committee members to, from the neighborhood that we're doing it in to have a say?
Can I stop you right there?
Yeah.
Listen to my motion that I'm gonna make.
Good man.
It'll cover every bit of what you just said, and then some. Yes, sir. Answer your question, yeah. But we got to do it in the, in the form of motion. I'm gonna make the recommendation to this commission. That's just part of it. All right. Okay, we got all the appointments named there.
Yep.
Mr. Burris, Steve Strickland, and Carlos is still state. All right. Item E, Mr. Manager.
Okay, item E is a request to approve an alcohol license at nineteen sixty-seven State Street. And I think Mr. Schuber said, I'll get him to present it since he has more direct information about it.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Chairman, Commissioners, this is a request for an alcohol license for for nineteen sixty-seven State Street. This is the little convenience store that's next to the Bryant's. It used to be the old Bryant's Auto Store, um, Auto Lot. It has a current license that's being purchased by Ms., Mr. Patel, and there's no qualifiers to what this will-
Just wants to transfer.
Right, and she meets all the requirements.
Commissioner, y'all, okay?
Where's this fellow living? You don't have a home address where county or town is. Got Indian, from a place of birth, you don't have a head view.
I didn't catch that.
Can a person from another country apply for a beer license where killing?
They should live, they should live here. I didn't catch that. I'll, I'll find out what, what I am for, for revenue.
All right. But y'all okay with it?
Yep.
You take care of that for us.
I will.
All right. Item F, County?
Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to be sure we have a Ware County address for this fellow if he's gonna apply for it.
Yes, sir. He is, he's, he's gonna take care of it.
He's gonna sell beer and wine, yeah, you need to have that.
All right. Item F.
Okay, under tab F is County Manager Contract Renewal, Employment Contract Renewal. I left this at the end to see if you wanted to cover that during the executive session for discussion. So that's the reason why it's there.
Yes, sir. That's fine. All right, that, that covers all the Commissioners. Any of you got any comments you want to make before we go in, you fellow?
I make a motion, we proceed to the-
Sir.
I make a motion, we proceed to the-
No, sir. County Manager, you got anything you want to say?
Um, yes, sir. There's just one thing. Some time ago, the commission did amendment to our speed, uh, speed limit ordinance for Jamestown Road when they're putting in the train trestle, and also on Needham Road because of the repairs that needed to be done. Those things are, have been completed and done with, so we, we need to repeal those ordinances. So I think we can probably do that at the next meeting, uh, just quick as possible to repeal it. Yes, sir.
All right.
Just to bring that up to let you know that we'll need to get that done.
You have that on the agenda, and we'll take care of it.
Yes, sir.
All right, anything else?
That's it. I'm sorry. That's it, I'm sorry.
Madam Attorney?
I don't have anything formally, Mr. Chairman, but I did wanna mention in anticipation of our five o'clock meeting, generally, I believe, you know, historically, you as a board have not taken public comment on specific agenda items.
That's why we're here.
We have a time for public comment, and so, you know, just in preparation for the five o'clock meeting, I just wanted to re-mention that to the board and the public so that we're all aware that there is a time for public comment. But as far as specific agenda item comments, uh, we generally, you know, don't, and, and only because it's to keep the meeting, you know, moving along quickly. And so, you know, we don't have, um, a long time on a certain topic. Now, you know, if the commissioners desired so, of course, if there was something that we needed to hear from, but I did wanna remind you all of that.
Yes, sir. So everybody understand what she just said. The time to say, what you wanna say is from three to... There we return here, and then five o'clock, we vote on as we go. Okay?
Well, there is a time during the five o'clock public meeting for public comments also.
So, I guess you're saying really on the work session, then that's not really the time unless we are allowed?
No, it, it certainly is the time, and I don't mean to imply it was anything that was done today was improper. Um, just that under the Open Meetings Act, you know, you all have, um, put on the agenda a time for public comments. And, you know, we've had a lot of feedback on certain agenda items, which is, is fine, and I don't mean to minimize that. But I did wanna remind you all that there is a time on the agenda for the public comments.
That's right, that's in the work session.
And also in the public meeting.
The session to discuss property and acquisition and personnel, though I have a motion.
So, Mr. Chair.
I got a motion to have a second.
Mr. Manager, what, the probate judge gonna talk?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, I didn't know if you wanted to wait to the end or, or not, but he made...
We gonna come back. Either way, it...
Hope he just go ahead and let me in, go ahead and get his business finished up, he's got a lot of work to do.
Yeah, he's got license to write. Come on up, Chief.
What we're hearing is, uh, on the, uh, position, um, where we promoted, uh, Tanya for Associate Judge. And there's been no, uh, pay increase or anything for that. And I sent y'all a letter from the state showing what the laws are. And that, but it is required for the promotion, and the salary should go along with it. And I just want you to look at that and go ahead and see what we can go ahead and get that started. Cause it is a requirement of the state. That's the main thing I wanted to say. And if we, uh, need to get, if you need any more comments or need more to check with me, I'll go over and all of it with you individually or however, how you wanna do it. Okay? Anything else on, any questions or... Cause I, I think I sent the letter to all of y'all showing all that.
The appro, go on up.
Huh?
Uh, she's, this lady right here, the one you want to...
Yes, Tanya.
Okay, Miss Tanya.
Yeah, she is the, she's my Associate Judge.
Yeah.
And she's been doing the job for over a year now. And with no extra pay or anything like that, she's going to the schools to get her certifications and all that. And so that's where we're at right now. We need to make it where that it's required and that, cause I know that she's got to do her, her twelve hours of time to be certified. And that's what we're doing now. And she's already done the ones for the last year. And now we got to do the one for this year. It got postponed to November, but we'll try to get that in. So, any questions?
Mr. Chairman, could, um, Mr. Moy put, gather up, consolidate all this information and put it into a proposal so we'll have something in hand we can actually discuss?
Yeah.
We've got all the information that he'll need, and we can present it to him. If he, he's got most of it already, but we can present it to him and he can get it all lined up.
Yeah, I've got a copy of the letter that was sent.
Yeah, we got everything.
I mean, everything, I mean, I've heard ten different things on this. Just put it all in one package and let's look at it.
We got it.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Tanya will put it in his hands before we leave here.
Judge, how long, how long has she been the deputy?
She's been, been my Associate Judge for about a year and, uh...
Okay.
A year. And, uh, she's been my chief deputy for, and my clerk for seven, nine years, okay?
Okay.
So, she got plenty of experience.
We got her and Ashley.
Cause I think during the, uh, budget process, uh, wasn't this supposed to have been done last year?
Yes.
At my understanding, like I said, I'm the...
There was, um, they said they didn't have the funds in the budget at the time.
That was last year.
Uh, applied, you know, asked them for it, and they agreed to make her my Associate Judge. They said it wasn't in the budget, but when they, uh, the budget came up, they would review that and add it to the next budget. And the next budget's already gone, and it's still not there.
Okay, and, uh...
So that's what I'm trying to hold them, hold them to what they said and try to get things done because she deserves it.
Okay, and you said...
She's doing the job, so she deserves the pay.
And by state law?
State law says she does.
Okay.
Okay, and he's got the letter from the Director of the Probate Council dating all this and what the salaries are in the other counties. Most of the counties are smaller than us, and they have Associate Judges, and it shows what they're paying, and most of them is higher than what we are requesting.
What county, your state that's smaller than Ware County that's got Associate Judges?
It's on the list there. He'll present it to you.
Upson and Madison.
Yeah.
Judge Bennett, would, would you mind including the chain of command for your department in your present, in the presentation to Scott? An organizational chart for your department?
What you mean now?
I'd like to know who's in the department and your, how you wanna lay it out.
We got, um, well, we got myself.
You'll just write it down, that's...
Yeah, I'll get it all down, we'll put it in there for you to have all that. Okay. Anything else?
I have, I have a motion to, you know, in the executive session, was that you? Who seconded it, sir?
Mr. Chairman, just for the record, let's make sure we detail exactly what we're going into executive session to discuss. Is it simply personnel or was it broader than that?
Well, I see, I read it off, uh, discussion, uh, property acquisition and personnel.
Okay, perfect, just wanna make sure we get it for our minutes, thank you.
Everybody understand what we're going in there for.
I guess.
Yeah.
Well, I'll just read to you what...
Hold on. Hi. Hi. Hi.
Hi.
Mr. Chairman. We'll be back in a few, folks.
Well, there's three of us here.
Eight minutes.
Appreciate it. We got that one and then that's his meeting. We'll get the rest of it. Yes, sir? Yes, sir? Yeah, I'll see you Wednesday for another couple meetings.
On that repaving list, there's two rows left off. Do you want... We just do a change order when it's... When we approve, just approve it and do a change order later.
They got that same man damn good, remember that? They got that same man damn good but somebody can't walk forward. Oh, you gonna have chicks anyway. You had the cash, didn't you?
What did that thing cost you? What did it cost? I don't know. I don't think it was a thousand dollars.
That's a meeting in November.
It'd be nice if they could've mounted that circuit inside the wall where it dropped right down in your office or somebody's office. He got a point there too. Anyway, here what it is.
November the... November the ninth?
First meeting then?
That's the first, that's November the ninth.
How you tell them that the county commission will not be attending any of their...
Yeah.
Meetings or anything?
You know they could chew ABC out of you. I said, "You know they could chew ABC out of you."
I got it.
Do you want to start that and close out the rigor... The close up session?
Yes, sir. We need to do that.
Because we got a pause a minute for him to turn it over and get it sent out to the next...
Okay, we need to...
Yeah, yeah, we just need to close out the work session.
Need a motion of... Need a motion of...
Some mood that we...
Yeah.
Some mood we come out of this negative session.
I make a motion.
No, he's... He made the motion.
I thought, hold on, aren't we closing the work sessions?
We're closing this work session.
Work session?
Closing the work list.
Executive session.
Work session.
No, work session.
Work session. Close the work session.
Motion, second. All in favor of my saying... Yes, sir.